All right, uh, welcome to the Town Act and Plan of Wood Meeting for Thursday, May 19th at 6:00 PM. Uh, while I stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, everybody get a chance to look at the minutes for April 7th and May 5th.
April 7th has a few titles.
Okay.
Want to tell me which one you found?
Yeah, um, just a couple of small things actually on the second page, second line from the bottom. The board stated that the zoning for the area is, get rid of the word "A," critical, rural, and then I would suggest which requires a conditional use permit or something like that. You definitely have to add the word rural in there. And then on the third page, pretty much the middle of the page, the line starts with the chairman's stop sign by saying that the board and...
He.
He were talking about asphalt. I think that was all, all I found.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion we accept the minutes from Thursday, April 7th as directed.
On favor? All those.
Wouldn't have abstained.
In the meeting, uh, minutes for Thursday, May 5th.
I'll make a motion we accept the minutes from Thursday, May 5th. That's written.
Second. On favor? All right. All right, we'll move on to, uh, old business. We'll start with, uh, Greg Martinez, Iron Tales, 559, Route 109, lot 148-001, finalized site review. If you'd like to come up to the podium.
Hello?
How are you?
How you doing?
Good, thanks, good.
Doc, just tell us a little bit about what you...
Well, just, uh...
Anything that's changed in the last year or...
Uh, well, just, you know, just what we had discussed and, you know, developed, you know, got the wall up. Uh, I'm still waiting gates. They're getting painted now, as a matter of fact. The frames are getting painted. Uh, those are solid gates that'll be going on the backside and also the Milton Mills roadside. Uh, the, uh, the food truck area is complete. Uh, the gift shop, I haven't started. I started a little, little work inside, but I still have a lot of stuff that I have to move, so I really haven't started any construction. And when I do, I'll be, you know, I'll be applying for a building permit for, for that with, uh, the code enforcement office. Uh, traffic control, I, as a matter of fact, I received the, uh, some pylons. I'm gonna be laying out, uh, the path of travel that goes out around the side of the building. I always had a concern because it's two-way traffic, so I've actually got, I purchased pylons, cones, uh, because the traffic cones I bought, they, they tend to get run over and not seen, so these are the tall cylindrical ones. So I'll be running those out. Uh, I've got the orange ones for the outside and yellow, yellow down, down the center. So hopefully, you know, in hopes that everybody's safe traveling in and out, because on that back corner, when you're coming around the building, you just can't see. You can't see the other coming traffic. Um, outside of that, that's, uh, pretty much all the, uh, proposals, uh, changes that were proposed that I recall.
You did choose to look at this?
I did not. Other pilings on the drawing?
The traffic flow piling?
No.
No, I, that was an, you know, an additional, you know, thing that I did. I mean, I, I wasn't required to do that. The lines have been painted for, uh, for, uh, this would be, uh, the third year that they're in place. I was using traffic cones, uh, just to keep it orderly, uh, and, and obviously, and safe as well, more so safe, because like I say, coming around the backside of that building, if you're going to exit and there's somebody to come around, somebody get in and one another, you've got a mess on our hands. So, uh, that is, like I said, that's of my own, you know, I, I made that move. It wasn't part of the requirements or anything outside of what was already existing.
There was, in our minutes, Greg, there was, uh, discussion of a service area. What was that service area? Is that where you...
Maybe the food truck area?
No, we talked about that and a service area.
I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm at a loss. Service area.
Is there any additional notes on that?
I mean...
Which, which note, so I can give it to him?
It's the last, uh, it's the meeting of 10, May 10th, 2021, the last page, top of the page. Mr. Smith is talking about, uh, summarizing the conditions we had talked about.
May 10th. Hold on, I'll give you a copy when I can figure it out. May 10th, last page you sent?
Yep. Top of the page where, uh, Ben Smith is summarizing the conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just kind of a list. Doesn't really say what it's...
Yeah, I went through all...
Food service.
I, I'm...
That's what I thought.
Maybe it's where you were serving...
Serving food outside.
Food outside.
Oh, yes, I, that, yes. I mean, I've been doing that all along, but apparently that was never, prior to my existence there, apparently that was never approved, although I, I, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that and it came up and through this process. So, yeah, that's just a continuance of, uh, that with, with approval.
And those are in this, in between your main building and in this area?
Yes, right out there off the, off the, and also on the cement patio, you know, wherever, you know, I have picnic tables laid out. The picnic tables are not on the plan per se, but I do have a total of, uh, 34 picnic tables, which, uh, they run, I have five across the front of the building in that corral area. And then the balance is in front of the, uh, well, it's on the patio in front of the stage area and then also opposite, where you see deliveries on the opposite side of that structure in that area is where the, all the tables are. And, you know, if, if you, you could drive through at any time and see that, see that yourself.
You have the parking separate from the tables? Do you have them roped off or something?
No, no, it's all, all, all open.
Do you have any Jersey barriers there?
I'm sorry?
Excuse me, do you have any Jersey barriers in the parking lot?
No.
Designated area, no?
No. As far as to the parking goes and whatnot?
Right.
No, they, they generally, folks will come around and they'll park on the paved areas and I have purchased also, I have cement pads that I have purchased through Janus Precast and I'll be putting those in the gravel area where the, where the, uh, where the motorcycle parking is indicated. I, 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 it won't be strictly for motorcycles only. I allow autos back there as well, but the purpose of the cement pads, they're 15 inches wide by 12 feet long. Basically, I'm going, I'm gonna put them so to where there, there's order in there and it's gonna, I'm gonna pan up kickstands here so motorcycles don't get trapped, there's flow of traffic in, in and out. But I mean, I, I, you know, just doing that on my own to create organization and safety so people, you know, what happens is I get, you know, motorcycles in there and everybody's afraid to park in the gravel or park there because they're gonna get trapped. Well, the, the way I'm laying this out is to allow and maintain flow, egress, you know, and exits. So if somebody could come in, they park their motorcycle and they're ready to go and, and they're free to go and they have a way to get out. Because without that, it, you know, in the gravel, it does create, uh, bottlenecks and also, I mean, people, what they'll do is they'll park right along the edge of the pavement because they feel like, okay, I can leave when I want to leave. So, in an effort to organize that, that's why I've, that's why I made that purchase. And those are, well, they're behind schedule, as a matter of fact, I should have had those already, but I'll be putting those in once, once they arrive.
I was mainly referring to where you have your people eating food.
Yeah, no, there's no, no, no Jersey barriers or anything. I would, I, I would, I would ask that the, you know, take, uh, if they have opportunity, maybe even to do, you know, I don't know if you guys, when you do sidewalks or whatever, but come and see, come to the operation when it's in, you know, when it's in swing, like on a Saturday or Sunday during the day and you can see, and, and, and that's the best way. And I'm not saying that what you're saying is not, you know, concerning, you know, because I've never considered it, you know, but maybe come and see and, and get a better feel for how flow is and, and how things are. You know, generally, I, I don't have anybody parking up in the picnic table area. They're kind of away and they move up, but I'm not saying it's never happened because I mean, there's pavement there and people see a hole, you know, they fill it.
Right. I understand why Jason asked the question and that's why I was asking about Jersey.
Yeah. You know, and then like I said, I'm, I'm doing all I can to, uh, create control without having physical, you know, physical bodies there, you know, the way I've laid it out. Without having any physical barriers or what have you. And, you know, as I've operated over several years, it's never been an issue, but obviously, I mean, it's like not having a, you know, not having protection to a propane tank or bottles are on a propane tank. I mean, accidents happen all the time, so.
So our minutes, Greg, showed two conditions of approval. One was to repaint the parking lines and install signage for traffic controls, so, um...
Yeah.
I heard you talk about the traffic control with the parking lines repainted?
The, the, the trail, the, the lines that I maintain are the ones that go flow around the building, around the back of the building.
The drive, the drive part, okay.
Yes, the drive, the drive part.
Okay. And then the, uh, the second condition was outdoor entertainment would be limited to Saturdays and Sundays between 1:00 to 5:00.
Yes, that's...
Unless you do a...
Right, and that is, right, and, and that is, that's correct. And I do have, I, I do have some, uh, evening shows planned, I think over the course of the season that there might, there's three or four, but that is, you know, if I get approval on them and there'll be, you know, there'll be notification in that.
I bring that up because that condition should be on the sheet we signed and unless I missed it, I don't see that.
No, I didn't see it on there.
But, you know, I, I have a question, just playing devil's advocate, you know, not to, you know, cut off my nose to spite my face, but if I'm within the ordinance, the sound ordinance for a show at night, I'm, I'm allowed to do that, although, you know, that's not my intent because, you know...
Well, we're not addressing those mass, whatever they call them, uh...
Mass gatherings.
Mass gatherings.
No, I'm just talking, you know, just on a regular business day, I'm, I'm referring to, you know, as long as I'm within noise ordinance.
Well, we had many discussions and the end of the result was outdoor entertainment Saturday and Sundays.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
1:00 to 5:00.
Yes, yeah, exactly. You know, that's, because that's what I've been doing, I mean, but as I continue to grow, you know, in my, so that, that could never happen, even if I'm within the sound ordinance.
What, you could go outside other than Saturday and Sunday, 1:00 to 5:00?
Oh, no, no, no. I only have live entertainment Friday, Saturday and Sunday. I'm just saying if I did an evening show, as long as I'm within the ordinance, it could be, could it be after 5:00 PM?
If right.
If you, if you get approval from the selectmen. The condition we laid out here was your outdoor, um, approval entertainment would be Saturdays and Sundays.
Right.
Right, so that's not other days of the week or different times, it's Saturdays and Sundays.
Okay, so anytime I do an outdoor show, I gotta get a mass gathering permit?
If you're gonna have that many people or...
Well, no, I mean, it's, you know, like I say, it's, if I'm not having a mass gathering, it's just another day of business.
Right, but we, we had limited that to Saturdays and Sundays, so if you wanna do it at different times or days, then I think it has to be revised, because that's not what we approved.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough, yeah. I'll cross that bridge when I need to, if I ever need to.
Yeah, well, there was some discussion about Friday.
There was a lot of discussion about Friday, but at the end of the day, I think we came to an agreement that, um, Fridays would go away and under the, because if he was gonna do Friday, it would be one of those big shows and it's not our purview.
Okay.
And we settled on what you had them doing essentially Saturday and Sundays.
Right, yeah. But I mean, I, I do do entertainment at night, but I generally do it indoors.
Right.
But if, you know, if I were to do, right, so if I was to take one of the shows and put it outdoors and I have to revisit, we, we have to revisit this is what you're saying simply, regardless of, you know, regardless of whether I'm within the ordinance or within the ordinance, if I'm not exceeding the noise ordinance.
Right.
You know, it may be legal, but it's not legal because it's not part of this...
Well, it's not what we approved.
Right, yeah.
And I'm not saying we wouldn't have...
No, no, I understand, yeah, yep, understood. So before, if, if that were to ever happen, which is highly unlikely, because I, I'm sure to what anybody might tell you, I work hard to be a good neighbor, but, you know, I do, like I said, I have three or four bigger shows that would be a ticketed event, so it would require a mass gathering permit anyway. And I just assume, make as little noise as possible because it makes my life a lot easier and keeps the money coming in, so. And once again, you know, not to beat a dead horse, but I invite all of you to come and see, see the operation when it's in, in full swing, just to get a good feel for, you know, what, what goes on and how the flow is and how we operate.
So I have a procedural question, Mr. Chairman. Um, with the, what we approved, does the condition, I always thought the condition needed to be on there. And if it does, do we pen and ink it? Do we, it's a pretty short condition. I, I don't know how that, how that works.
We can, we can get another draft and then sign, sign it at the next meeting.
Right.
I mean, it's one, it's one way to do it. I don't remember ever writing a condition on this thing.
Okay.
I don't know. I know it isn't much to it, but we should have the hours of operation on here because it's, especially because it was kind of a contentious issue with that hearing and such.
What if Mr. Martinez writes it and, and just, um, initials it like you do on a check?
And then I can have, uh, the survey company draw up a new one and then you guys can sign it. He doesn't have to be here.
I don't think you would have to be here for us to sign the...
Right, that's why I'm saying he won't have to be here.
Yeah, right, right.
If we write it down, you guys okay, he okay's it and then that way it gets transferred appropriately, not just me making a phone call or an email. I'd rather it be that way.
We'll just have him add that and there's no place to sign it.
We have to just decide if we think a handwritten note on there would be enough or if we want a new draft.
It's probably nothing for, uh, for the, uh, corner post to add, add the note.
Right, right.
Add the signature box.
If I could just, if I could just be privy to the language you're gonna use...
Yeah.
You know, you know, before, before you sign that plan, you know, just, you know, live music outside, Saturday, Sunday, 1:00 to 5:00, correct?
Yeah, it, what it says is outdoor entertainment is limited to Saturdays and Sundays between 1:00 and 5:00.
Okay, yeah.
Top of the last page, um, Jason.
So during Bike Week, I have, so I'd have to get a, a permit because I got a guy playing acoustic guitar during the week. He plays noon to 4:00 outside, so, and that's, that's, I've been doing, using the same guy every year, so, but that would have to, I, I guess I would have to get some kind of a special permit then for that case. You know, and that's why, that's why, you know, I mean, it's generally no live music at night outside without special permit. I guess is where I'm, what I'm trying to, you know, clarify. I understand it, but if it's not an inks, inked in, I understand what the point is of the board's, you know, goal here is so I don't have late night music going every weekend outside.
You were open about that guitar guy, I mean, that's all through, through the minutes.
I'm sorry, sir?
Well, I say, you, you brought up the guitar guy.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been, we went back through all the minutes and...
Yeah.
You were open about that guy.
Yeah.
I just don't know how that affects what we just said.
It's an hour difference.
Okay.
Well, it's June week instead of Saturday.
Yeah.
Yeah, just that, that Bike Week. And it's actually Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, he plays from noon to 4:00 on a guitar.
And that's during Bike Week?
Yes, sir.
What if we made that a second condition? Authorizing, um, you know, acoustic guy?
And if, and if we could do that, that would be helpful because what I need to do when I have my burnout competition, I definitely come and I draw a burner, I mean, a burner, a, a mass gathering permit because there is a big showing that day. It's not at night, it's during the day, but I don't believe that I can, because it came up last year, you know, with, before the board's selectmen, where I cannot draw a mass gathering permit that's gonna cover me for the week. It has to be, you know, each event, which would mean, you know, I'd have to come in for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and then Saturday. So if that can, that release, that note on there would be, would be helpful until they don't do Bike Week anymore, you know? And if it rains, I'm sitting there by myself anyway.
So I got another procedural question, Mr. Chairman, if, um, can we do, do that as a condition after we voted to approve this?
Let me just, just get it on the form and then vote to approve it.
And sign it.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't want to.
Yeah, I'm trying to...
I don't know, I mean...
You're right.
We just have to get the verbiage of that. Second condition we go.
Yeah.
During Bike Week.
Yeah.
During Bike Week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Tuesday through Friday?
Noon time to 4:00.
Noon to 4:00. Um, it's a single guy, guitar guy, acoustic?
Yeah, yes.
An acoustic guitar player is authorized?
Decibels. Not to exceed the decibels, daytime decibels.
I don't know if we need to add that, that's kinda understood, but...
So during Bike Week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 12 to 4:00, an acoustical...
Acoustic guitar player is authorized?
Uh, that, just, that is amplified, obviously. I mean, he's just not a, you know, if he was just playing the guitar, nobody would...
Yeah, but it's not...
I just, I just, you know, I know, I don't wanna split hairs, but I believe in being upfront.
Yeah, no, I, that's...
Straight out.
But he doesn't have a bass, he doesn't...
Yeah, no, no, yeah. And it's just, yeah, it's kind of folk-like type, you know, motorcycle-type music. This, this fellow, he goes to a lot of the rallies and he's pretty well-known amongst the customer base.
What week is that?
Uh, yeah, I'll tell you in a second, I just, uh...
Is it the same every, every year, Greg?
Uh, generally, yes. Uh, this, it starts, technically Laconia Bike Week starts the 10th, which is Friday the 10th, and then it will end on, on, uh, Sunday the 19th. So for me, you know, Bike Week would be, uh, this year would be the 13th. I'm open, which I'm usually closed, but I don't have any entertainment. So the 13th, 14th, 15th, 16th and 17th are the days we're speaking of right now, which is the Monday through Friday. 18th would be, is the burnout competition where I would get the, uh, the mass gathering permit and then the 19th is the end of Bike Week and it's just a regular day of business for me.
I don't know if I wanna put specific dates though, if it...
No, because, yeah, I, I'm, obviously how the calendar falls, but Bike Week and...
If we say Laconia, Lacon, during Laconia Bike Week.
Right. That identifies as specific.
Yeah.
That specific week.
Do you need Laconia or just want Bike Week?
Well, I think Laconia is...
There's Bike Weeks all over the country. You've been, yeah, except for, hey, there's one in Myrtle Beach.
Yeah.
So during Bike, during Laconia Bike Week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Tuesday through Friday.
Yeah, Tuesday, yeah, it's Thursday, Friday.
Noon through 4:00.
Acoustic entertainment.
And acoustical guitar or acoustical entertainment or guitar?
What do you say if the...
Yeah, acoustic is usually a single anyway.
I wouldn't wanna label to a guy, because what happens if a guy doesn't wanna do it anymore then?
Right, yeah.
We don't wanna be too specific.
I like the word entertainment better, acoustic entertainment.
Yeah.
It's fancy.
More inclusive, well.
It is.
Entertainment's broad during Bike.
You guys are killing me here. I got scratches all over this already.
Do you want to distribute acoustic music or...
No, I think entertainment's fine, it's just, it is...
I gotta get entertainment right now. So during Laconia Bike Week, Tuesday through Friday, from 12 to 4:00, an acoustical entertainment will be allowed or will be, um...
Permitted.
Permitted?
Or, I can't, how about a waiver for the, I don't know, I don't know the proper term.
It's permitted, I think, right? Because this is a permit.
Or approved, will be approved.
Yeah.
Permitted.
Or maybe like permitted?
All right, during Laconia Bike Week, Tuesday through Friday, from 12 to four, an acoustical entertainment will be permitted.
Acustic.
Acoustic?
Yeah, N-O-A-L.
More scribbles.
Acoustical ceiling.
Acoustic entertainment will be permitted.
Is permitted. And use the passive voice.
I've got a question about your outside lighting there. I noticed when you come around on, from 109 onto Milton Mills Road at night, your lighting for the yard in the back there stays on all night.
Yes, it's, it's activated by its, by, by the light sensor.
Yeah.
Yes.
But even, you know, the hours or the months of the year you're not open, I notice they're still on.
Yeah, that's just for security purposes.
Is there anything you could do to, you know, down shield? I think it's mostly just one of the lights that's really bright when you come around that corner. It's like, uh, B right.
So where are we going? What's, what's the route of travel where it's an issue?
Turning on at Milton Mills Road.
From, from, from going, going down towards this lane or coming up from Sanford?
Coming from Sanford, you take a left on Milton Mills Road and as you come around the corner, you're just kind of, it's, I think it's this light right here, somewhere in this vicinity. I think it might even be the corner light.
Yeah, because I know I've got one at the corner. And I was gonna add some additional ones just because it's really dark back.
Yeah, but if there's anything you could do to direct it downward or, or not, because I know, you know, we noted, we don't want it going across the property line particularly. And it just, it's kind of like, it's brighter than an oncoming car when you're coming in there.
So you're coming around here and the, and the light around here is?
Yeah, there's a couple. There's like one here and one here or something.
Yeah, I think.
And you have some here, but they're not, I don't find them.
Well, they're going directly at the.
You're like facing this one.
They're going directly at the, I'll, I'll have to, to be honest with you, I'll have to look at it and see if I.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't take much to shield it somehow.
I suppose, I suppose. But like, say, it's, you know, it's about, you know, for security reasons and also, you know, it's still, still somewhat dark down there and it's important that I see what's going on throughout the parking lot.
Right, right. I was curious about the hours in the winter that you're not open too.
Well, I suppose, you know.
Necessary to keep the light.
I'm having all the cameras installed. They might be infrared and if that's the case, I, I could just shut them off.
Yeah.
I could shut them off in, in season.
Just something.
Just make sure the cam.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, it's nothing I'm gonna put as a condition. It's just something that, if I've noted.
Yep. Allow me time to take a peek at it and.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Somewhere down the pike, I'll touch base with you and see if I can't, if I'm not seeing it, you can point it out to me, perhaps.
Yeah, and it could be it's not as present in the summertime when the leaves are on the trees, but just, I definitely noticed it this past winter.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess we get those two, get those two conditions on.
Condition one, outdoor entertainment is limited to Saturdays and Sundays between 1:00 PM and 5:00 PM. Condition two, during Laconia Bike Week, acoustic entertainment will be permitted from 12:00 PM, Tuesday through Friday.
12 to four.
12 to four, excuse me. It's on there. I just skipped that one.
Those are the ones.
You want me to email you a clean? You could just email me and then, you know, when, when it comes, well, you, yeah, just whatever the, the language is.
Yeah.
And then I'll, obviously I'll get a, I'll get, yeah, I'll get a copy from Mr. Olivia on their corner post.
I have one other question, Greg.
Yes, sir.
What are the three, three acts you got coming in? The massive gathering acts.
Well, I'm still waiting for my, my big show this season is gonna be Creed Fisher. I don't know if you're familiar with Creed Fisher. He's out of Texas, Country Music. He's not well known up here, but I'm supposed to have him in September. I haven't gotten final confirmation, but I'm hopeful. So that's gonna be a big show. And then I have a ACDC back, uh, Back in Black Mass. It's a very popular touring group that's an ACDC cover band and they, they're all over the country. And let's see who else we have. Once and Outlaw, they're out of, some members of the Marshall Tucker Outlaws, you know, just, you know, guys from, that have played in those bands. They, they've got a, they've been doing a tour around, all around New England. So I have them booked. And the other show escapes me currently. It's another tribute band. I'd like to get, I'd like to get Chris Stapleton and people like that, but can't afford it. But I think, you know, as soon as I get Creed Fisher confirmation, I'm gonna put that out because I, I'm pretty excited about the show. That's my kind of music. That's, doesn't necessarily always pay the bills, what I like, but I think a lot of people do enjoy his music. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
You too.
Thank you. Next up, John, Canyon, 1505 Foxes Ridge Road, Acton, Maine. Procedurally, Mr. Chairman, are we to, um, decide if the application is now complete and schedule?
Public hearing?
A public hearing?
Yes.
Is that the next step?
Yes.
Is he gonna get more copies?
I didn't even know it lasted.
She's gonna give me one. She needs to choose.
What?
Copies of the application.
Are they guys she's gonna get it, I'm assuming?
She's getting one, I know.
Yeah, I can do it.
John, we had talked earlier about, or at the last meeting about, I think Mike said you could provide some evidence of your, um, has disposal process prior usage, that sort of thing. Is that coming or?
So I, I looked for a receipt. It was probably three or four years ago and I wasn't able to find anything, so. I started the application for a business account with Clean Harbors. I just haven't gotten all the way through that process yet, but I think that would satisfy your.
Yeah, I think it would, yeah, that, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you close to getting that?
Well, I, I sent everything in, so I'm waiting on a response from them now. Um, I can prod them a little bit.
Do you have to produce a certain amount of waste oil for them to come out to your place?
Yeah, they, they don't like to do less than a drum for a pickup.
But they don't mind how frequent it is?
Yeah, it's just, it's, you actually do it all online now. You don't even call them anymore. You just, you go on their portal and schedule a pickup and, you know, within a reasonable amount of time, a few days, when they have a truck in the area, they'll grab it and drop off an empty drum.
Yeah.
Are they picking up the drum you have? Didn't you say you had one?
No, that's going to a guy that burns waste oil, so he just comes and takes the waste oil.
Okay.
So I just keep them separate. Anything that's combustible, I save. He'll come get it and give me an empty drum. Coolant is really the thing that you gotta pay to get rid of. Oh, thanks.
So you also want to read through the standards? Or, I mean, I didn't, there wasn't much at the sidewalk that, that liked to discuss, really.
Right.
I have a question about, um, you talked about the decibels for when the garage door was open.
Yeah.
Um, if you look on the ordinance on page 58, you're in a residential area, not in the commercial zone.
Not commercial, no.
So the daytime decimal for that is 50, midnight is 45. That, you, you said, um, the minutes I read, you said that it would be finished most of the time by five. Is there a reason why you're asking for hours from 7 to 9?
Um, I just, you know, obviously it's hard for some people to like be without their car during the day, so I thought, you know, having the opportunity to provide that service and help, you know, help people work around their schedules would be convenient, but it's not something that I absolutely have to do.
I'm not saying that you shouldn't be allowed to do that. I was just thinking, just in, in consideration of your neighbor nighttime, because things travel differently at nighttime when everything is really quiet. Would you consider just keeping the door closed?
Yeah, absolutely.
Losing tools and things like that after 5 o'clock?
Yeah.
Conditional use.
What are we doing? We're just, just the second page. Well.
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, I think you should start at the top, not on the second page. 663, six, yeah, 66.3.
That applies, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I was just wondering if we had to read that one. I was, I was just looking at.
It's an existing conditional use or structure.
Yeah, I mean, he's pretty much already operating, right?
Okay.
That's what it's telling us.
Second page?
Well, we're not, yeah. I don't, I mean, there's nothing to object to, I don't think. All the information he's provided.
I guess skipping to the second page.
Yeah. Yeah, you're pretty, yeah, all the application stuff's been provided, so you're pretty much starting at 6634.
Hold on. We don't have to read them all, right? We went through that with our training setting.
Well, we have to read all the I, A through M.
I think by exception. I think we go down, you can go.
No, A through M, we have to. That was more for like the site plan review where there was all these headings and subheadings. We didn't have to read all of them. Take for conditional use, we should read each one.
Okay.
I, I don't mind reading them.
Yeah, both.
We're just letting Bevan get caught up, too.
Yeah, he's good.
All right. The use will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat.
It will not.
Any, uh, findings of fact that would lead us to that conclusion?
No different than, than what it's used for today. Has no, no changed impact from what was already there.
I think perhaps the frequency of the sound will be increased. I think that's the biggest thing we have, right, is the potential noise pollution.
Yes, but we have the door where there will be no.
Yeah, so we're gonna have a, a condition that, that covers that.
Right. Certainly from 5 to 9 and.
Okay. The use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies.
N-A.
C, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Access, traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with the performance standards in this ordinance.
Easily backed out of the driveway. I don't think it's gonna have that many people. I don't think it's gonna be congested.
Yeah, I think he said he might have up to 10 cars in there.
He also said this was gonna be like for my apartment.
Right, right.
So he'll know exactly when, what's coming in and what's going in. It's not rotating type of thing.
Yeah, it depends how many vehicles are parked stationary in there. It is, it is tighter space than it could be, but.
You're intending to put a sign up?
Yes.
It's not gonna prohibit? The view from left to right?
No, I'll keep it back off the edge of the road.
Yeah, you have pretty good site distance at the end of the drive.
Yeah, I remember where my split rail fence is. It's, it's like 10 feet beyond the edge of the right, right away, so I figured about that far off the road.
Yeah.
And that'll keep it back off the edge of the pavement about 25 feet.
Okay. E, the site design isn't conformous with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations.
It's not in a flood zone.
N-A.
N-A.
Adequate, F, adequate provision for the dispose of all wastewater and solid waste has been made.
Did you contact, you were talking about contacting Clean Harbor or Safety Clean?
Yeah, so I, I submitted an application for a business account with them. I just haven't gotten the response from them yet.
COVID.
Okay, H, uh, storm water drainage system capable of handling a 25-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed.
Did you skip G?
Oh, I did skip G. Adequate provision for the. Adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made.
Just discuss that.
That's what we were just talking about.
Yes.
The work in progress per se.
Yes, and he will bring the business agreement to show that.
Then we have the storm water. Storm water drainage system capable of handling a twenty-five-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed. You don't really, you're not really expanding your impervious surface that much, right? No. There is that little like sluice way across your driveway. Just by. It's like a dip as you, as you get just past the garage. Oh, that was the cot for the electrical line. Oh, is that what that is? Very electric, yeah. Water doesn't generally follow that thing, or? Uh, it usually drains right through it, honestly. Yeah, yeah, okay. I was wondering what that was, if it had anything to do with water or not. Okay, I, adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made. Not gonna have much soil disturbance. Nope. No, and I'll finish that, uh, the slope there, so it'll be a four-to-one slope, and I'll seat it so that it doesn't wash out. Mm-hmm, like behind the building? Kind of that, where that tractor was parked, where that little fill spot is, and behind the building. And behind the building, too.
Right, yeah.
If you do plan on expanding parking, you'll have to come back.
Okay.
For approval, because right now you're just asking for ten, ten spots. If you decide that you wanna go bigger, then.
Yeah.
I gotta be back.
It'll be time to move at that point, if I gotta go bigger.
Yeah.
J, there's adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed use and for fire protection purposes. Do you have, uh, running water in your garage there? No, there's no running water in that building.
Yeah. You have, you're gonna extinguishers and things like that?
Yeah. Yeah, I can have a couple fire extinguishers and whatever else is required.
You gonna be storing any fuel on site?
Um, not in that building. I mean, I do, I mean, I have obviously my own personal stuff in my other garage. I have a boat and lawn equipment, so I do store, you know, five-gallon can of gas or whatever. No, no permanent tanks or anything. That's your, you drive a fuel truck as a job, or? No, that's a friend of mine's truck. Okay, and you're working on it? Yeah, I'm gonna help him with some stuff on it. Okay. All right, uh, K, the provisions for buffer strips and on-site landscaping provide for adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust odor, and the like. L, all performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met.
Yeah.
Yes. And M, archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan will be protected.
An A. Are you still thinking the sixteen?
It's two weeks for the second and four for the sixteenth. The only, like I said, the only concern that I had, and I think we would have adequate time, we just, like I said, the mail service has been, um,
Slow?
Sluggish. Um, but I mean, I, if I get them out, I can have these letters drawn up and get them out by tomorrow. Um, so we can entertain this for the second, I think. And move this along as quick as possible.
There's also a problem with the posting in the newspaper. Yesterday was the last day for the month.
So we're gonna have to go to the sixteenth. I have to give ten days for public hearing.
Hmm. Why can't it?
Can't use a different newspaper?
Because when I got the message from them, they said that they're closing the twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth. So the next issue isn't until the twenty-sixth, and then they're not running for, because of Memorial Day.
Their next issue, so they're gonna run the twenty-sixth then?
Right.
So, but if I get, if we get the public hearing in tomorrow, if we get the notice in tomorrow, they'll, they're gonna put it on the twenty-sixth. That's ten days. No, it's seven days. Sorry.
What, what newspapers then?
It just goes in, what, the Smart Shopper?
Yeah, the Reporter.
The Reporter, yeah, it's just the, the public, the general circulation, every, you know, everybody gets it situation, or.
Is there another one we ever use? Like the Smart Shopper? Years ago.
Uh, that's the only one I've ever, we were ever told to use that, so I'm, I'm unfamiliar with that.
The Smart Shopper no longer runs.
Want to find that. We're limited on newspapers now. We could pay the Portland press.
Uh, yeah, I think we actually talked about that before.
I mean, it seems crazy to wait two weeks because that little paper nobody's gonna look at isn't gonna publish.
Is the Reporter get distributed to everybody, like the Smart Shopper used to?
I don't think. No, you have to pick it up.
Pick it up somewhere.
Here, at the store.
Right, so.
I think he's gonna ask John. Since within thirty days.
In a newspaper of general circulation.
So why can't we just put it in the press?
I think we can.
Okay. Cause why, wait in a month, it's crazy.
Yeah, and the people that are really gonna wanna go to the hearing are the neighbors who are gonna be notified by the mail anyway.
Right.
Well, isn't there anything in there that covers like that? That if the newspaper isn't being printed, we can't.
No. It just says town website and newspaper of general circulation in the area.
Yeah. So, sixteenth.
Why no?
Because, um, they, they can't go and change things for everybody, for every time or something like that, or, um, not advised, is kind of like the word we're used.
Not put it in the.
But, yeah.
Your County Coast Stop. I don't know. It says in a newspaper. Let's see. Doesn't say the Reporter or.
Right, you could always use the same one.
Yeah, it's just like, don't do anything.
God forbid you change anything, do anything different.
Yeah.
Um, newspaper or general circulation, is there anything else?
No, apparently not. So we're off to wait till the sixteen?
Shaw's, right.
It has to meet that ten-day deadline too, though. I can't steer, I can't divert from that.
Oh, I got, oh, the ten days, right, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I get the whole publication situation. Sixteenth.
Sixteenth at six? I'm against it. I'll just say, you, you do what you have to do because somebody's ruled, but that is ridiculous. You're making the guy wait a month for, to get it into a newspaper that nobody reads. Some people pick it up. Nobody reads the Press Help, nobody reads the Coast Stop. People don't read papers anymore. So to make, make the guy wait an extra two weeks to follow a rule that should not be that rigid is not correct to me. So, but you do, I just wanted to say that for the record, and you do what you have to do. It's ridiculous.
Maybe it's not. Maybe it's not good.
You know.
Take it to town media, change the verbiage in here.
It doesn't say which paper.
No.
Put it in a paper. Pick a paper.
Right.
All right, so we'll have to roll with June sixteenth then, at six. Best we can do for you. Till we get to.
Doesn't stop you from doing what you're doing right now, right?
Still helping people out. Yeah, you're not losing money.
Always helping people out. He's being kind.
Right. And we'll probably. After the hearing, we'll probably, uh, discuss and vote on the application on that same day, so. Okay. All you need to bring in is that, um.
If you get a copy of.
Clean Harbor or Clean Harbor.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would anticipate a couple of conditions like on, you brought up one on, uh, yeah, close the door after five.
Okay.
Um, usually give your wastewater to the same guy.
Yes.
Should we get, can you write him a receipt for that, just so we know? Well, you can break, are you gonna get a receipt for the barrel you currently have, or some documentation?
It's just a, he's a private guy that burns it in his shop, so. So he just takes it, there's no? Yeah. Exchange, he just takes it? Yeah, he just comes and gets the full barrel and leaves me an empty one.
I think John's looking for a paper trail, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that business agreement will be fine. It'd be nice if the guy gave you a receipt or something for the oil, but, um, you know, C, you talked about seeding the slope behind. We'd probably make that a condition. Fiber extinguishers, we'd probably put that as a condition, just to. Do you have a smoke detector in that garage?
No.
Might be another condition. That might help. Yeah, carbon monoxide, so.
I mean, honestly, if I had a smoke detector in there, it'd be going off all the time. It would be constant.
Yeah.
You could turn it on after you're not in there.
Smoke detector on a switch.
That's gotta be against the code.
Just unplug it while you're in there.
Well, I mean, it would make it safer at night, I guess. Theoretically. Something, you know, just, we want to get a document like this that we're signing.
We have to sign something, dude.
Yeah, or. I mean, pretty much for every conditional use, we end up with like it's a map of, it's like a, pretty much a plot plan that has kind, it's, it would be a lot like this thing right here. And then you'd have, um, some conditions listed on there and a a signature box, so we have somewhere to sign. Okay, is that something you want me to make? Well, some people make it themselves, other people, you know, hire someone to do it. This is, I don't know if you just saw this one that, this was what we just looked at. From Iron Tales. So it'd be like this.
The signature block.
You know, it'd show your parking area and your. You'd probably put the. Yeah, if it was your whole lot, you, you could put that zone line on there. I don't know if we require, how, how far away is that from your garage about? The, the zoning line? Between the rural and the critical rural? The very back edge of my property line, it's like the last ten or fifteen feet is critical rural. So it's? About as far away as you can be and still be on my land. So it's like at least a couple hundred feet away from here? It's probably close to two hundred feet, yeah. Yeah, okay, so maybe that, maybe you don't need to include that on your, you could just do a, a closer, closer map of the areas working in. Wouldn't need to include your whole lot. Okay. And Jason can, and Ashley can help you with the conditions you're gonna put on there. You'll email, email them to him or something? Yeah, uh. I guess that's about it.
Door closed after five P.M., fire extinguisher is present?
Yeah.
Seeding slope.
Yeah. Back too, right?
Receding slopes. Uh, side and back, and rear.
Mm-hmm.
Any other ones? I have three right now.
The ten, ten parking spaces?
Ten parking spaces, operating hours.
Yeah, the operating hours.
What do we wanna do with those? Cause he's asking from seven to nine. I mean, seven.
Right, Monday through Saturday, seven A.M. to nine P.M. Are we?
Closing the doors, you already put that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you only set it after five, what about in the morning?
To nine. Nine P.M. on Saturdays too, or just? Doesn't matter.
What do we think?
Monday through Saturday?
Closed-door operations after five.
Yeah, if the door is closed, I think it's okay. Maybe we need to say something like, uh, after five. And.
I have closed door after five P.M.
Yeah, that covers it.
I can just mend, I can mend those together so that it, so it's not a separate condition, it's just operating seven A.M. to nine P.M. Monday through Saturday, door closed after five P.M.
Adequate fire protection?
I got fire, I got fire extinguishers present. Um, I'll obviously add more to it, I'm just trying to, quick notes here. Uh, receding slopes, the side and rear of garage. Ten parking spaces. Maximum ten parking spaces. Pres, um, waste oil will, um, disposal, um, I'm trying to think of something about that, or.
I don't know if we need a condition, we'd just like to see something in a package.
That'll be in the findings affair.
Yeah, that'll be in the findings affair. And it'll only be for railing tech, you guys, I think you said, for the coolant, right? Yeah. Not for the waste oil.
I mean, if I was in a, in a situation where I had to pay to get rid of it, they'll definitely take that, too.
Right.
Condition, you will double charge, like the Mers.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's good. If anybody has anything else they wanna add to it. Other than the public notice, John.
I get it, I get it, cause no, who reads a newspaper anymore? You know, but let's do things the same way for twenty years, and God forbid we do something different.
I know.
God forbid.
One of these days we'll break soup.
So we'll see you on the sixteenth of June.
I'll be here.
All right.
And then, who should I send the additional stuff to? Jason?
Yeah, you have my email.
Yeah.
I'm gonna send you an email, um, tomorrow or Saturday. That'll help outline this, so that when you do draw up a plan. I'm gonna send you an email, um, tomorrow or Saturday, that'll help outline this, so that when you do draw up a plan for these guys to approve, he'll have these conditions.
Okay.
And I might even, I might even draw it up and have them review it before, I'll give it to you, but then they'll, they'll review it so that it's finalized, and we're not coming back and saying, oh, well, I wanted this instead, so.
Yeah, and then all we gotta do is sign it, once we agree, you don't even have to be here when.
Okay.
Sign it.
Well, yeah.
Great.
So what I'll do, that, and then I'll, they'll review it at the end of the next meeting, and then if it's good, then, um, we'll get it finalized, and then on the sixteenth. Yeah, however it works, but, we do have to do a public hearing still, so it's.
Alright.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
Alright. Pending projects, Camp East Shore Drive, David Peppin, O K M, and Dustin Fornier.
Um, as you guys know, Camp Kit is just, they're still working on their plans, they wanted, they just wanted to come in and introduce and talk to you guys. Uh, the Peppins are, um, I put them, I've asked them to just wait, or I've said the board wants them to wait until everything is complete. None of this, um, come in, something's being revised, we'll get to it when it's, you know, so, every, when they come back, it's gonna be finalized. This is what we want you guys to review, um, there's gonna be no more revisions. Um, as well as, all the studies will be done, vernal pools, all that information will be in hand, so then we can go ahead and schedule the site walk. That's why we haven't heard from them in a little bit.
What's going on with the storage units one? It's been around for a while.
Storage unit?
O K M property management.
Same thing, he's, I think he came in here, uh, he didn't wanna do any engineered plans or whatever it was without more, knowing more from you guys. And he didn't have, last time he came bef, the first time he came in, he didn't have a site plan. Um, he came in this time with a site plan, now he wanted to, so he wanted you guys to look at the site plan, okay, that, in a sense, then he's gonna go and get engine, like, the buildings, have those placed or something like that, but, um.
Right, he had a layout for his buildings, but it was too large, sort of.
Yeah, he's still working with it, um, I'll reach out to him and see where that goes on. I have some packets here, um, for, uh, June second, um, thing called Acorn Storage, Pat Stevens is, is looking to do a storage unit on Milton, at the beginning of Milton Mills. Uh, just a small one on, you guys did a subdivision for him, I think, last year. Two lot, two or three lots.
It'd been two years ago, huh?
It was a couple of years, yeah, I'm not sure when it was.
They'll sell something on one of them.
Yeah, he's, well, he's selling a lot, he's selling, I think he's trying to sell one of the lots, and then one of the lots he's keeping for, he's gonna, he's proposing to put, um. He's proposing to put, uh, I think it was thirty by one thirty, one unit for right now, see how that goes, and.
Isn't there an issue on the size of them?
Our proposal didn't pass for a dude.
It's changed, didn't pass.
Right, we just had to go with that default.
So I have these, um, ask them around for you guys to, if you wanna take them home to review, or you wanna just wait till the second?
No, no, we want them.
Oh, I know, that's why I brought him up, John.
So we can actually change that, we can get that out of the newspaper thing, if you'd like, John, we could work that for the next meet, uh, town meeting.
I'm not gonna do a town meeting for that, that's, that's administrative, administrivia, the thing just says a paper, it's administrivia. It's ridiculous.
Well, here, I mean, he's right, the script is just either.
I, I'm not disagreeing, though.
Just how quick I need someone to do it.
It's really an issue, and something that needs to change, and it's something we need to address.
But it's not an ordinance change, is my point, yes. Being a little flexible in support of the residents, and now have to wait another couple of weeks, in this case, it's not a big deal.
No, but I know, I, I understand where your frustration is.
Last time I read the Fall Press paper, it was delivered to my house by accident. I still have the box.
Yeah, there's a weekly, too, I mean, there are other options.
We could do a different newspaper.
Does everybody have one of these ones where it has all the, you have conditional use, site plan, subdivision, and good neighbor? So I'm gonna make some new ones anyway, because this was in one of mine, and I'll give them to you anyway, but, um.
No, it's this one.
I'm gonna add it to, I'm gonna make new ones.
Yeah.
It looks like this one, right?
Yeah, it's.
Careful, it's an athlete.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, this is good, we never had anything for this practical. Did you do this, Jason?
Sure did.
But, I thought of you guys. So that'll help out a little bit, and then, um, even when it comes to the findings of the facts, it gives me, lays it right out, so that when I just put it for them.
This is good.
That was nice of you.
Gavin, you talking about this general one right there, on page fifteen?
Yeah. Oh, so it tells us it's a, wait, how big's the building?
I think it's thirty by one thirty.
What's the math tell us? It's bigger than twenty by one. So the math tells us it's, uh, professional business services having twenty-five hundred square feet or more of gross floor area? So that tells us the site plan review?
Yeah, this is a site plan review.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, he's got, uh, application for site plan review, right on the front page.
Yeah, I see it, no, I'm just, just making sure we're all on the same.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, no, no. Uh, Joe Stanley is gonna, is gonna be, consult with this one, so.
Yeah.
Alright, well, that's it for this evening.
So what's, so is this all that we have from the next agenda right now, or?
Uh, is it right now, yes, um, I was, ho, yeah, I'm not gonna be the dead horse, but yes, it is, yeah. I have, I still have another week before I close the agenda, so, as of right now, this is the only thing I have on it.
Yeah.
So, we'll see. Yeah.
I moved with John.
One second.
Our favor.